I will now call the March 18th, 2019 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. In a moment, I'm gonna have you stand with me, observe a moment of silence. And then we have PAC 138 from Missionwood Church will come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's my understanding this is the first year kindergarteners can be in the Scouts. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we got an exciting group of kindergarten scouts from PAC 138 that will come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Introduce leader. Once I turn around and look at you, you can start them up. And I'm sure they're gonna be with a lot of energy in saying the pledge. Let us stand and observe a moment of silence.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you PAC 138 for coming tonight. Now, you're gonna come back as first graders and do that again for me?
Sure.
Alright, good deal. Wanna welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch it later on, on YouTube. Next, we have the consent agenda, and Councilman Fowler has asked that...
Oh. Your Honor.
Yes.
If I may, before we proceed.
Yes.
I would like to make an introduction. Reverend Dr. Ed Golden, we all know as Doc. Just as a quick intro, for those who might not know him in the audience, he was named Outstanding Citizen of the Year several times by several different organizations. He has a lifetime Presidential Volunteer Service Award, the Point of Light Award, I could go on and on about all of his attributes. He served 10 years in the Navy. He's a Vietnam Vet. He has received the award from Missouri Lieutenant Governor, The Hope to Kansas City. We all know him as the chaplain for our Blue Springs Police Department, prior to him retiring from that. So today, he is here for a special reason, and I'm gonna let him explain to you why he is with us today. Doc?
Welcome, Doc.
Thank you. I am here on behalf of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 317 Heart of America, to recognize two very, very special people from our city. Mr. Mayor, would you please come down and escort the First Lady up here close to this, so I can do a couple little presentations and tell you a little bit about why I'm here. Nine years ago, the city of Blue Springs brought the wall that heals, the Vietnam Wall that heals, here to our town. I was with Blue Springs Police Department at the time as the operations supervisor for the volunteer police service program, and took myself and some of our volunteers out to do security for the event. I was out there from Wednesday morning till Saturday night, and it was hard walking in front of that wall. I went home Saturday night, I wasn't gonna come back. But I got home, and I got an email from a kid's sister of a friend of mine, and she had sent me a message about the Presidents of the United States that were ministers that had Sunday services on the White House, and so I responded back and said, "Well, I'm doing something kinda historic too." And she must've been sitting by her computer, 'cause she said, "Well, my cousin's name is on that wall." Back up, Sunday morning, and we were giving these medallions for those that were in theater, certificates, pins, maps, bumper stickers, and everything to appreciate our Vietnam veterans. Something happened after that event. I realized what I was supposed to do, and I went to our mayor, and I went to Eleanor Fraser, and asked if I could get custody of the leftover medallions and pins and maps and certificates, because I was gonna find veterans that they belonged to. In that nine years, it took until last November, there was a Vietnam veteran, fellow veteran, was a door gunner on a helicopter that lost his hearing over in Nam. And just so happens, two of his granddaughters work at ZARDIS, and some of you may know, I go over there every once in a while.
Daily.
Daily, yeah. And we brought Ronnie in and celebrated him that day, and our good friend and comrade, Rob Hughes from Channel 9, came over and filmed that event. And it was decided that it was gonna be one of the top stories of 2018 for Channel 9. And that brought a whole lot of ray of sunshine to Ronnie, to the city of Blue Springs, and to our fellow veterans. That continues on to be what our chapter has adopted as a Heroes at Home program. One of the things I've discovered in going coast to coast and north to south, giving out these, making these celebrations for memories for those that have lost their loved ones and doing memorial services, that family members suffered too. Those heroes at home that waited on their warrior to come home, that listened to all of the things that we didn't even get to hear until we got home. And for that reason, I decided that we were going to celebrate both the veterans and their heroes at home, and that's what we're here to do tonight. And I have several things that I'm going to present, and then we got one more little surprise. I don't know how to say Sergeant Mayor, does that sound okay?
That's like Lieutenant Sergeant.
Would you turn around here? On behalf of a grateful nation, Vietnam Veterans of America, and Chapter 317 and all your fellow veterans, what I'm putting on here is the pin for a life membership in Vietnam Veterans of America, welcome home, well done. This is a 40-year coin for the 40th anniversary of Vietnam Veterans of America.
Very nice.
And I have a certificate. Your service made a difference. Mayor Sergeant Carson Ross, U.S. Army, and First Lady Eloise Ross, Vietnam Veterans Hero at Home, for exceptional valor, loyalty, country, and community. And in recognition of that, we present this to you and to Eloise. One of the things that I have seen in the 25 years that I've known you is when we go to dinners, and because you were letting me sit next to your bride there, how kind and gentle. And you brought the valor, and you brought the courage, and you brought the love back from the war to fight the war you're fighting now, and that did not go unnoticed. Susan, could you please bring those up for me?
This'll look good in my newly renovated office.
Wait till you see the rest. What we have here, these are for Eloise.
Oh, nice, thank you. Did y'all get that?
Oops, I didn't really notice. That's alright.
You know, Army guys being nice to Navy guys, right?
You know what? We hauled Marines around and took them to war, after we went across Hattersden, got them good in the seasick. Nobody mess with our jarheads. We have one more thing, Mr. Mayor and First Lady. Susan, would you please come up? Our Mayor Pro Tem.
This gives me...
There's a lot of things that happen in your office you don't know about.
Great pleasure, yes, sneaking around, right?
Yeah.
We do have a proclamation, and I know you're famous for saying, "I won't do all the whereas's and wherefores." However, I think this is very important. Whereas, on Monday, March 18th, 2019, Mayor and Combat Veteran Carson Ross... Get this right, I can see it in the light. And First Lady Eloise Ross are being recognized for their selfless, dedicated, and heroic service to both our country, our great city of Blue Springs, Missouri, by the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 317 Heart of America, in Kansas City, Missouri. And whereas, during Carson's time in combat in Vietnam, and after, as he has served as our mayor, Eloise as a hero at home, constantly by his side, being an amazing part of the history of our city, serving as our great First Lady, gave unselfishly of their time energy, love, and above and beyond hard work, as an amazing example of what patriotism, loyalty, and devotion to fellow citizens looks like. For each and every event for the city of Blue Springs, no matter what day or what the weather was like, we have seen them both out and leading the celebration of life of this town. And whereas the Heroes at Home program exists to honor those who have shown valor, integrity, and undying love for our city and our country, we hereby appoint Mayor Carson Ross as a lifetime member of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 317 Kansas City, and First Lady Eloise Ross, a hero at home, and salute them both for all they have given to us. Now therefore, I, Susan Culpepper, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, with a salute, welcome home and well done, in cooperation with the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 317 Heart of America, do hereby proclaim March 18th, 2019, as Mayor Carson Ross and First Lady Eloise Ross Day.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Or you wanna do it now?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. You're not used to getting flowers.
Okay, all your smiles, please. Thank you. We got it. So did you wanna get Blue Springs behind us?
Let's get Blue Springs behind us. Well, we're behind Blue Springs.
We have a car at this.
Thank you.
Is that done?
Nope.
Thank you so much, everybody. Glad to honor, thank you, God bless you both.
That was quite an honor. I was not expecting all of that, but I really appreciate it. And when you do things in your life, you don't do it expecting recognition, do it because you have a passion and you believe in it. So to be able to get recognition for some of the things that you're gonna do anyway is just kinda icing on the cake. And so I appreciate the recognition. And I'm certainly, First Lady Eloise would too, if she was able to be able to do that.
Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda, and Councilman Fowler asked that we pull item E. Unless there are other items to be pulled, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, congratulations, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
The, this contract that we're approving tonight is the 2019 Street Program. A lot of money being put into this, appreciate all the work that staff has done. I do wanna kind of have a share of concern that I see going on in the county. If you look at the county road, if you go up to north on Pink Hill Road, east of seven out towards Buckner-Tarsney Road, or you go down south, the Colburn Road at seven, and head again east to Buckner-Tarsney, both of those roads in the last few years have, they were asphalt roads originally, and they've been, in the county areas, have been coated with thick tar and gravel. That is, it's a rougher surface. My guess is that they're extending the life of their asphalt with that, but still, it's not an asphalt road, and it's not a standard that I would, I'd be, I wish our county would do a little bit more to do asphalt overlay versus going back to gravel roads, that's what it's like. So, and you don't get as good a gas mileage on that, and they're just not as safe for cyclists, things like that too. So we have, this particular program is really gonna extend the amount of dollars that we put into sealing, it looks like, which sealing is great, preventive maintenance on asphalt, so always want that. There is asphalt overlay in here. I'm a little bit concerned that maybe we're not doing the proportion of the city that we need to, to keep up with the asphalt overlay. I've heard 8% per year is the target to get to, and I know we're doing a lot of sealing, and that's good to get back to that, 'cause we went a long time without it. And there was a concern years ago that, I guess, we misrepresented the slurry seal, and we didn't quite keep up with the roads the way we should. So sealing is not, is not three inches of asphalt overlay, or two inches. So I think we gotta remember that distinction and keep aggressively trying to keep up with our overlay program.
Okay, with that, would you like to have a motion for approval?
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on Blue River Family Dental.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. MCRC Board of Directors Meeting Minutes from February 26, 2019, Notice of Public Hearing to Taxing Jurisdictions, Distribution List, Tax Impact Analysis, Certified Mail Receipts, and Bill Number 4643 with Abatement Agreement attached. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Okay, Mr. Culpepper.
Great. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the time this evening. This public hearing is being held at the request of the applicant, Blue River Family Dental, for consideration to approve MCRC tax abatement of property located at 709 West Main Street for the construction of a new 3,371 square foot facility. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, a bill approving the tax abatement will be ready for introduction and readings. The Main Center Redevelopment Corporation Development Plan was approved in August 2001, and redevelopment projects have been approved since that period in and throughout downtown Blue Springs. Blue River Family Dental submitted an application to receive MCRC tax abatement on January 16th of this year, proposing the construction of the new dental office at 709 West Main Street. Currently, Blue River Dental is located at 807 West Main Street, and the new development would retain the business in downtown Blue Springs, while also creating an appealing new standalone building. You know, I've been here less than a year, but it's my understanding that this will be the first ground-up, brand-new commercial construction in downtown in quite some time. The bill will approve the proposed project and the abatement agreement between Main Center Redevelopment Corporation and Blue River Real Estate Investment LLC, allowing the MCRC to initiate tax abatement and for the dental office to receive tax abatement upon completion of the new structure. The city is not a party to the abatement agreement, but the City Council is being requested to approve the agreement as it controls the terms and conditions under which the City Council is approving abatement for the project. Tax abatement for the project will be initiated for the project upon completion of construction, and will be limited in the following manners. The maximum duration of the agreement will be 25 years, 100% tax abatement on the improved property value, with the exception of the Central Jackson County Fire District capturing 75% of the taxes it would normally receive. This is a provision allowed by Senate Bill 870, which became law in August of 2018. Tax abatement for the property will be terminated prior to the 25-year duration in the event that the abatement value over that period of time exceeds the investment value. However, if you look at the tax impact analysis, that's not particularly likely in this case. As the project is seeking the maximum tax abatement allowed under MCRC, both the tax impact analysis and but-for analysis were required to demonstrate the need for MCRC tax abatement, as well as the impact to taxing jurisdictions. The project will account for $1,540,000 of new capital investment in 2019, and a 25-year abatement value of $753,552.54, or roughly $30,000 annually. I'm here, I'm certainly here for questions. Our Economic Development Legal Council is here for questions, and the applicant's attorney, Mr. Devin Mirfasih, is also here.
Are there any questions from the council, Mr. Culpepper?
I guess, one of the things, other taxing districts, I think they've been part of this process along the way, and they're comfortable with this move.
The other taxing jurisdictions were instrumental in the creation of the policy, pretty much through the duration of the policy, yes.
And what else?
And to clarify that point, we did send out notices of this public hearing and the ins and outs of this particular project 21 days ago, so they've certainly had time to voice any concern or opinion.
Is the applicant present and wish to come and address the council?
I'm here on his behalf.
Would you come up and be sworn in?
I do. Devin Mirfasih, D-E-V-I-N-M-I-R-F-A-S-I-H-I, 600 East Admiral Boulevard, Kansas City, Missouri, 64106.
Okay, any comments you'd like to make, or are you just gonna stand for questions that the council might have?
Well, good evening, Mayor, congratulations, and members of the council. Dr. Snyder is unable to be here this evening, but sent me to represent him. He's incredibly excited about this new opportunity. I know that he currently, there's seven people in his office with the new construction, he's gonna be able to grow to a total of 12, bring on another dentist, and two more hygienists, and then two more office staff. So that's his five-year plan, hoping to get there sooner. This is the first construction, of my understanding, a new standalone building, and I think it'll be, just from seeing the plans, and if you've seen the proposal whatsoever, it's gonna be state-of-the-art, top-notch, and I do know Dr. Snyder personally, everything he does is, he just blows it out of the park, so I'm open for questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Saying none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We'll go to the public. Is there anyone that would just like to speak in support of? Support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4643, An Ordinance Approving the Blue River Family Dental Project Under the Amended and Restated Main Center Redevelopment Plan and Approving an Abatement Agreement for the Project.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Levisay.
Mr. Culpepper, I have a quick question that I don't know if it matters at all, but I'm curious and making sure that everything is correct. If you look on page 128 of our packet, it's the application for the MCRC. You said they're requesting the maximum out, which is the Level A1, which is the 10 years plus 15 years at 100%, so it's 25 years at 100. And the application, it's marked out, and Level A2 is marked, and it's corrected and dated and highlighted, so I'm just curious as to why that went to A2, and it sounds like they're requesting A1.
It is actually...
It may not matter at all.
No, no, I assume you're on the page where it has the description of tax abatement program.
It's the tax abatement program levels, yes.
Yes. Level A has two levels, one is a minimum of 750, the other's a minimum of 1 million. They are requesting the one that's the minimum of 1 million dollars.
Right.
So it is that one. It may be a matter of, it may be a Scribner's error in the particular case.
The application's irrelevant, it's what we're approving today that matters.
Correct.
That's, I just wanted to be sure we were all on the same page.
Great.
If I may, at that meeting, I brought up that same question, description, and if I remember correctly, they said it was an error, and there was a note attached to the document that that was to be changed.
Yep, absolutely. And as you look at Level A, it has the minimum 750, has the first category, and the minimum of 1 million is the second category, so in my mind, you would have A1 and A2, but in this case, you know, they are pursuing the maximum abatement.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we were correct, so.
Absolutely.
And if I may, Mayor, if my memory serves me correctly, and you may be better at this than I am, but I don't think we've had any new construction in the downtown corridor since the 80s. Now, I may be off on that, but...
Other than the houses that we're doing?
Yeah, as far as commercial, you know, other than maybe adding to an additional, something that was already here, but as far as ground up from bare ground, it's been a long time, so.
So this will be a welcome addition.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Not, roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4643, An Ordinance Approving the Blue River Family Dental Project Under the Amended and Restated Main Center Redevelopment Plan and Approving an Abatement Agreement for the Project.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4802.
Next, we have introduction, reading of Bill 4644.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4644, An Ordinance Accepting the Conveyance of a Permanent Utility Easement from DAK Realty Dev Co., LLC, for the estates at Chapman Farms.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4644, An Ordinance Accepting the Conveyance of a Permanent Utility Easement from DAK Realty Dev Co., LLC, for the estates at Chapman Farms.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4803.
Next, we have a presentation by the Public Art Commission. Annual update, Ms. Eleanor Fraser and her cadre of art enthusiasts, just back there.
Don't have to, okay?
Okay.
We're ready to start. Start with one. Okay, this is it. Okay. Well, we thank you for the opportunity to bring you up to date on the Public Art Commission. And as you see, I'm Eleanor Fraser, this is Raymond McGee. We also have other members of the Public Art Commission, they are Jeff Carpenter, Carrie Cole, Greta Koenor, Lawrence Randle, and Kathy White, and some of them are with us tonight. I'd like to remind you... I'd like to remind you, the definition of public art, and it's, as you're aware, it has a very special designation among the art world. Public art is defined as any artwork that is part of the community landscape which can be accessed without prior permission and is available without paying a fee. In other words, you could just walk up and there's the art, you can be with the art at any time and without any cost at all, unlike many other types of art where you have to arrange to visit that art and many times pay a considerable fee. Now, Blue Springs has the largest collection of public art in eastern Jackson County, so we should be very proud of that. Now, why should we have public art? Well, public art uniquely contributes to the quality environment of the community. It affords citizens opportunities to enjoy and appreciate art and for the various constituencies in our community to work together to bring about a culturally rich city. And what is a culturally rich city? It's a city that's on the move, on the right track, and staying the course.
(laughing).
The public art program benefits the whole community because it's one of the ways that sets our city apart, so you can market it to potential businesses, families, visitors. And as, as we see here with the slide, it is, it has impact. It is recognized that art creates emotions that inspire us and this differentiates, differentiates us from other communities because we have so much art. It gives us a common sense of belonging for our community and it spurs an opportunity for collaboration for those who live and work here. This is kind of exciting that we have this, something that brings us all together. Public art makes Blue Springs an even richer, better city than anywhere else in eastern Jackson County and maybe anywhere. You lost it, there it is.
Yeah, okay. I think it's got a bad battery. We are very proud of the notable items that Blue Springs Public Arts Commission has really achieved in the past 18 years. We believe that our efforts alter attitudes, perceptions, and engage the senses with an art experience where people and businesses would like to be.
This will work very good.
Thank you, Dennis. I'm going to just set this down. I'm certain that each of you have seen some of these sculptures, if not all. There really are, as a previous slide indicated, there's a total of 45 sculptures that are now on display throughout the city. Parents have told us that they and their children have made an effort to visit each of these and in these sculpture displays and to take selfies with their children next to them. These have now become permanent memories in each of their minds. We do also want to thank very much the patrons, in many cases, who have stepped forward with finances to assist us in the purchase of many of these sculptures in the collection. In some cases, our annual temporary art exhibits are collaboration between ourselves, developers, merchants, and first responders. In numerous cases, the result has been a permanent sculpture that is displayed in our community as the examples of illustrate. We plan to develop more of these collaborations in the future. As a result of an earlier City Council's establishment of our commission, we have built an excellent foundation from which to build our future. There are commitments resulting from our past 18 years that we need to address in addition to new opportunities that will further result in enrichment of our community. We plan to provide Blue Springs with continuous improvement in the arts experience. As time passes, our art collection ages and requires attention. In some cases, simple cleaning, or in other words, maybe a paint, a coat of paint, sealing waxes, or physical repairs are needed. These are a couple of examples of some structural problems that we really cannot ignore too much longer. And these will result in either, if ignored, irreparable harm or increased costs to restore To date, there has not been a city policy that formally sets forth the process in which the conservation or restoration of our artworks is pursued. We appreciate your consideration, thoughtfulness, and support of the policy that you have before, before you this evening. Thank you, and if you address any questions you have...
Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Carter.
Your Honor, I'm on my second go-around as the council liaison of the art commission and I would just like to say that these folks have tremendous passion for art in Blue Springs. And to Councilman Fowler's comment earlier about roads, our artwork also, we need to keep up with that. And they do it on a very limited budget. I know they're always asking for money and they've found some creative ways to go ask the public for money, so to get some private contributions as well. But we're very proud of our art in Blue Springs and just love driving by it, seeing it every day and knowing that we've got something nobody else has. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilman Culpepper.
Yeah, I just would like to add to that because it not only has brought art, it has brought a great sense of community because there, it's not just the, the art commission that does this, it's the partnerships that have been established with so many different organizations. I know fundraising is really hard, but it's one of those things that makes our city different and great and those partnerships make our city different and great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Edmondson.
Well, we go back way, way back to that first year and it's amazing how well this group, over the years, has managed money. I mean, we started out with a small amount of money from, from Walmart to do some great things and it's built and gone and you guys have done an excellent job of doing that through all these years and, and thank you.
Put a bat on this side.
Thanks for your service, doing a great job.
Thank you.
Councilman Kayler.
I also served on that commission and saw how they had unique ways of bringing money in and I just want to take the time and commend you all. Great job, doing good.
Thank you very much.
Always try to make a point that each council member serve at least a term on the art commission. And as I look at an audience and I see the faces, they are identified by art. I mean, when I, when I see all of you sitting out there that's involved, that's what I think about, with the drum major being Eleanor, leading the charge.
Drum major or drill sergeant? (laughing). Slight difference.
He beat me to that.
I think drill sergeant probably be more appropriate, but in, in a loving, kind way, not the military way that I'm used to. And, and Mr. McGee and I grew up in an art culture that you almost, you can pick it up one way or the other, even sometime by osmosis.
Hmm.
For those that don't know, Raymond and I both retired from Hallmark, spending many, many, many years there. I think you've beat me, I had 39 and I don't know what you had.
Really close.
Yeah, we both spent a lot of time. So anyway, I appreciate all the work that you do and, and I too enjoy as I drive around the city looking at it and it does my heart well. It warms my heart to know that we are the leader in Blue Springs over all the other municipalities in eastern Jackson County and probably in the metropolitan area beside Kansas City and they're a lot larger than we are, so...
We have money.
Yeah, so anyway, so thank you so much and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, then we'll move on to item number eight, which is the adoption of a resolution, 152019, approving the Public Arts Conservation and Restoration Task Policy and Procedure.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess we still have to roll call there too, so...
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next introduction reading of Bill Number 4645.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4645, An Ordinance Amending the 2018-19 Annual Budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson.
Your Honor, before the council votes on this, I've had the opportunity last week to, to have our district meetings with District 1 and District 3. This week, I'm meeting with District 2, so I haven't had the opportunity to discuss all of this budget amendment with everyone, but there is an item in here that deals with Downtown Alive and Downtown Blue Springs and that is a, a budget amendment for $30,000 that would relate to the legal work that's related to creating a downtown Main Street Community Improvement District. This is an item that we have discussed and we are moving forward with this. If, with your approval tonight of this budget amendment, we would then enter into an agreement with Downtown Alive to outline the roles and responsibilities for each entity going forward on what this looks like. The city would engage the legal team of Gilmore and Bell and there would be certain milestones that would be required before we would spend down all of this money. So I just want to make you, this is an item that's been discussed for at least three or four years with Downtown on Main Street and so I do, I wanted to call attention to it tonight so you know what you're voting on. And the snow and budget removal issue is what it is.
Okay, any comments?
Your Honor, I will abstain from voting on this because I am a member of the board for Downtown Alive.
Okay. Okay, this is first reading, roll call.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4645, An Ordinance Amending the 2018-19 Annual Budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4804.
Next, we have an introduction reading of Bill 4646.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor. First reading of Bill Number 4646, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 117, Conflicts of Interest, Section 117.O10 Declaration of Policy of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, Regarding Policies Relating to Conflicts of Interest, Ethics, and Reporting of Mismanagement and Prohibited Activity.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Second reading of Bill Number 4646, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 117, Conflicts of Interest, Section 117.O10 Declaration of Policy of the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, Regarding Policies Relating to Conflicts of Interest, Ethics, and Reporting of Mismanagement and Prohibited Activity.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4805.
Next, we have an adoption of a resolution approving the Code of Ethics and Reporting of Mismanagement and Prohibited Activity Policy.
I'll move to approve, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Not roll call.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levesey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
That brings us to mayoral announcements. Before I go to thoughts de panda, we have a proclamation here. Cheryl, would you like to stand up with?
Sure.
I'm not the only one that can keep a seat.
Apparently not. How did this happen? I know everything.
Okay.
Apparently not.
This is a resolution, it's, and I'm going to go ahead and read it like you did and it won't take that long. Whereas Cheryl Morgan is currently an active member of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers, Officers Association, as well as the Western Division of Municipal Clerks.